Pursuant to applicable law and my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19, this meeting is conducted by video conference. We will now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. Will the aldermen please make sure that their microphones are unmuted only when your name is called? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada.
Here.
Alderman Lasbada is here. Alderman Hopkins.
Here.
Alderman Hopkins is here. Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman Dow is here. Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman King is present. Alderman Hairston.
Present.
Alderman Hairston is present. Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Alderman Sawyer is present. Alderman Mitchell.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Zloski Garza.
Here.
Here and happy birthday. Alderman Thompson.
Present.
Alderman Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness.
Present.
Alderman Cardness is present. Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Burke is present. Alderman Lopez.
And I'm president. Your Christmas present is here.
Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Coleman is present. Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis.
Here.
Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Taylor is present. Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez.
Present.
Alderman Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Scott is present. Alderman Seijo Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Seijo Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Alderman Burnett is present. Alderman Urban.
Present.
Alderman Urban is present. Alderman Talafaro.
Present.
Alderman Talafaro is present. Alderman Ramboias.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ramboias is present. Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagispack.
Here.
Alderman Wagispack is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Santa.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Vegas.
Present.
Alderman Vegas is present. Alderman Metz.
Present.
Alderman Metz is present. Alderman Spasato.
Nick Spasato is here.
Alderman Spasato is present. Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez.
Present.
Alderman Vasquez is present. Alderman Napolitano.
Present.
Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley.
Present.
Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Smith is present. Alderman Tony.
Present.
Alderman Tony is present. Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Gardner is present. Alderman Kappelman.
Present.
Alderman Kappelman is present. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is present. Alderman Osterman.
Present.
Alderman Osterman is present. Alderman Hadden.
Present.
Alderman Hadden is present. Alderman Silverstein.
Present.
Alderman Silverstein is present. Peter.
Your Honor, there are 49 members present.
I don't know.
Your Honor, we have a quorum present.
Alderman Austin, a few, thank you. Okay. Thank you. There are 49 members present. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
The flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And bless America.
Thank you, Nick. It's my pleasure to announce that the invocation will be delivered by the great Reverend Marshall Hatch Senior of New Mount Pilgrim Church from the West Side. Reverend Hatch, I just want to personally thank you for your leadership during this very difficult time, the work that you were doing on the West Side, particularly your investment in the young men on the West Side, is a remarkable gift to our city. And we send you and your congregation the warmest of blessings and offer you a happy holiday greeting from me on behalf of the city. Thank you so much for all that you do. The floor is yours, Reverend Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the members of the City Council. My fellow citizens, let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the strength, the gift of life this day to serve, and we pray that you would bless the deliberations of this council today. We thank you for the leadership of the mayor, and we pray that you continue to grace all of these public servants with the hearts of shepherds that they will have with us and for us, the vision of one city, of one great city by the lake, the Lake Michigan, a city of great industry, a city of great hospitality, a city of big shoulders, railroads, and air travel, a city of Carl Sandburg, but also let it be a city that welcomes the Laquan McDonald's and the Betty Joneses and the Quintonio Legrias. Help us to see that the vision of one city means that we put the needs of our children, the elderly, and the poor first. We remember the teaching of Scripture that when the least of these, those who are in the margins, when their interests become central, that's when the kingdom of God arrives. And so we thank you now for the power to shape the direction of this city, to make a difference on behalf of those who are struggling in the midst of this coronavirus, this pandemic, and the ongoing epidemic of the pathologies of poverty. And now, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be vessels to be used by you, and we pray that you would use this City Council to do your work. And we ask every blessing in the name of the one who was born outside the inn in this season, baptized in muddy Jordan, reared in the ghettos of Nazareth, arrested by the authorities, crucified by the empire, but raised by the power of God. And we pray this prayer, the name of him who says, "As you've done unto the least of these, you've done it unto me," even in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Hatch. And before we begin the public comment, I do want to remind our colleagues that today is the birthday of Alderwoman Zdulowski Garza and wish her a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Way ahead of you, Mayor.
Happy birthday, Sue.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Sue.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And I also want to extend a happy birthday to all the December babies because I think we've had some that have occurred already and some will be occurring after we have our City Council meeting today. So happy birthday to all, and at this moment, we will begin the public comment.
The final round of public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to 30 minutes. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker is Kate Lowe.
Good morning. My name is Kate Lowe. I'm a member of the Bridgeport Alliance and the 11th Ward. The Bridgeport Alliance is today asking council to take two actions to support environmental justice. First, we urge all of you to vote against the proposed rezoning of 2424 South Halsted. Prologist is seeking to build a facility there, which Crane reports Amazon will leave. Residents within a half mile of the site are 80% people of color. Furthermore, this is a missed opportunity to develop riverfront property in line with the new equitable transit-oriented development policy. In fact, the Plan Commission's vote on this rezoning was divided. Second, we are asking council to pass a moratorium on logistics facilities on the South and West Side until it adopts ordinances addressing the inequitable distribution of logistics facilities. These sites, in fact, may not bring substantial economic development benefits. In its Regional Strategic Freight Direction Report, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning is cautious about freight for local economic development due to negative impact because other uses actually bring more tax revenue and because many associated jobs may be lost to automation. As many of you know, logistics and other polluting uses continue to concentrate on the South and West Side, which are already inequitably environmentally burdened. In addition to air pollution and quality of life impact, logistics facilities present potentially fatal traffic safety risks, especially for pedestrians and bicyclists. Instead, green, livable, and healthy land uses and jobs are possible and can be envisioned together. However, we need to halt inequitable logistics proliferation while working on such collective visions and alternatives. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. Our next speaker is Mr. George Blakemore. Mr. Blakemore, please press star six on your phone to unmute. Yes. My name is George Blakemore, and I'm not happy this morning. It's not oh, happy day. When I, yesterday, someone showed me a video of a black woman being abused by the Chicago Police Department. This Chicago Police Department is run by psychopaths, white psychopaths. Chicago is known throughout the world as being one of the most racist cities in the United States. Dr. King made that statement, and it's still going on today with this so-called democratic machine. Just several weeks ago, we had an election between the Democrats and the Republicans, and I tried to warn my people and tell these were just the same bird with two different wings, institutional racism. So I'm not happy. I want an explanation, and the black community wants an explanation. When did that happen? What we know. Why did it happen? And why is it a cover-up? What is the definition of transparency? Why would you want to keep us in the dark? Something is inherently wrong here with these black elected officials, called the Black Caucus, to accept that budget with these white psychopaths, altemans, and with these Hispanics that advocate for a sanctuary city in the United States of America. We have customs and immigration. This is a country supposed to be a democratic law. How can you let illegal from Cameroon, Guatemala, or Honduras come over here and use these resources that are very needed in the black community? Public housing, they get it. They get free education, they get it. They get food stamps. So I am not happy today. I'm an angry black male. Why do this continuously go on? All of you there are part of the problem, not the solution. And then when our young people keep singing, "We shall overcome." When will we overcome? How are we going to overcome this holocaust that has happened to our people here in the United States of America? Now, Ms. Lightfoot, we look for change. I hope that you have heard winked us. What is going on down there at this City Council? Is something... You're cracking me up. Mr. Blakemore, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Ms. Dalton, are you there?
Yes, I am. Mayor Lightfoot and members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to offer some comments in favor of the proposal to rename Outer Lakeshore Drive to DeSable Drive. My name is Yolene Dalton. I'm an attorney and founding member of the Haitian American Lawyers Association, one of the many organizations which support renaming Lakeshore Drive in honor of Jean Baptiste Pointe de Sabre, the founder of the city of Chicago. Having emigrated to the United States as an 11-year-old, I attended grammar school and high school in Evanston before attending college at Northwestern University and law school at the University of Chicago. At no point in my early education in Evanston was I taught about the contributions of Jean Baptiste Pointe de Sabre to the city of Chicago. Sadly, brown, black, and brown children growing up in Chicago may not know DeSable was a black man from the Caribbean country of Haiti who built a home north of the Chicago River near Lake Michigan in 1779, established a trading post, and provided for his family through his work as a trader and settler. After all, DeSable's contribution to the history of Chicago was soon forgotten, and John Kinsey, the man who purchased DeSable's land, home, bonds, and other belongings in 1800, was credited for years as the founder of the city. And while DeSable is now officially recognized as the founder of our country's third-largest city, 241 years after he built the settlement, which later became the city of Chicago, there is no major monument, no holiday, and no street named in his honor. The City Council now has an opportunity to recognize the contributions of Jean Baptiste Pointe de Sabre and showcase the city's founder in an appropriate manner. Renaming Lakeshore Drive, the premier road in Chicago, to DeSable Drive would raise the profile of this black hero and demonstrate to the black and brown children growing up in Chicago that they matter and the contributions they will make to the city and to the world will also be recognized and celebrated. Thank you very much for your attention and my best wishes for the holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton, for your comments. Next speaker is Patrick Dior. Mr. Patrick Dior is not here. Our next speaker is Ms. Elise Hernandez.
Bonjour. Bonjour, bonjour. Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, City Council members, and Committee on Transportation. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Elsie Hernandez, founder and president of the Haitian American Museum of Chicago, known as HAMAC, representing the Black Heroes Matter, one of a coalition of more than 80 organizations and businesses, along with other supporters who are calling for the injustices to Jean Baptiste Pointe de Sabre, Chicago's founding father, to be corrected. The museum opened in the Uptown community for the last eight years. The museum mission is to share the rich art culture and history of the first black nation in the world. Jean Baptiste Pointe de Sabre came from Saint-Domingue and now called Haiti. He traveled and became the first non-native settler by the lake in Chicago. And I must tell you today, ladies and gentlemen, that most of the visitors that come to the museum from Chicago and other states of the United States are not aware of Jean Baptiste Pointe de Sabre. The city is in a unique position today to set an example by correcting the injustices to DeSable, starting today with your vote. And we named the Lakeshore Drive from Hollywood to North Side to 67th Street to the South Side as DeSable Drive. We also needed a monument in a full city holiday in honor of DeSable, who founded in this great city. But today, it's all about DeSable Drive, that may say formerly Lakeshore Drive. After 240 years, a Black Heroes Matter coalition can see no reason why all members should not vote for Lakeshore Drive to be renamed in honor of this black man who founded this great city, Chicago. Your honorable Mayor Lightfoot, members of the Council, Transportation Committee, along with all other council members are in a unique and history-making position to do for Chicago what 1,000 before has failed to do. Please do not let this day pass. Let us do it together for this black Chicago founding father. A sincere thanks to all of you and happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Our next speaker is Fan Lee.
Hello, my name is Fan Lee. I will be living within a two-mile radius of four last-mile logistics facilities in Bridgeport. I'm here today to express opposition to the rezoning for 2420 South Halsted, record number 02020-3724, which is for the Prologist Amazon Warehouse in the 11th Ward because this project will disproportionately harm low-income and non-white residents, both environmentally and economically. I encourage everyone to read WBEZ's investigative report titled, "Amazon's Massive Chicago Area Expansion Was Fueled By $741 Million From Taxpayers." There you'll learn that Chicago gave Amazon six times more in tax incentives for projects built in communities with high concentrations of flat, Latinx, Asian, and low-income residents than those in predominantly white communities. Right now, there is only one Amazon last-mile warehouse on the North Side, but soon there will be five of them on the South and West Side. It's shameful for leaders like Commissioner Maurice Cox and Alderman Patrick Bailey Thompson to claim that a few hundred minimum-wage jobs will revitalize our economy while purposefully hiding corporate tax breaks to effectively hold the community hostage to your garbage economic plans and to claim moral superiority while deepening the worst parts of racial segregation. Economic and environmental development aren't mutually exclusive outcomes. At the CPC hearing, the Metropolitan Planning Council commented, quote, "This site holds the potential for mixed-use transit-oriented development. Such a development could simultaneously create recreation, preserve local biodiversity, and grow the tax revenue generated by the site more than a single warehouse," end quote. The work for environmental justice will extend well past this planned development, which is why residents are demanding stronger oversight processes. First, establish a city department for environmental protection. Two, per the recommendation of the Chicago Department of Public Health, develop an ordinance requiring new and more stringent permitting requirements to prevent cumulative burdens from disproportionately affecting certain neighborhoods. Third, issue a moratorium on all logistics facilities in the city. And lastly, vote no on record 2002020-3724. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, for your comments. The next speaker is Anna Shabrowski.
Hi, my name is Anna Shabrowski. I'm the community development lead with Bridgeport Alliance at Grassroots Community Group. As Kate Lowe and Fan Lee said, Bridgeport Alliance is asking you to vote no on the rezoning of 2420 South Halsted. The rezoning would allow Prologist to build a last-mile logistics facility that would flood our streets with hundreds of delivery vehicles and tractor-trailers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. According to the developer's own traffic study, on a peak day, which isn't defined and could occur nearly every day, 752 delivery drivers will come into our neighborhood and cross our protected bike lane on Halsted. 446 warehouse employees will commute through our neighborhood's residential streets, and 42 semi-trailers will travel through our neighborhood and turn across our protected bike lane to enter and exit the facility. The site plans show 11 loading docks for semi-trailers, which means that this 24-hour facility could easily unload even more semi-trailers, up to 264 tractor-trailers per day. The developer is the landlord, and they cannot guarantee that these are new jobs or the quality of these jobs. They're only saying that this is the number of vehicles that will be traveling through our neighborhood now. The areas affected are our L station, residential streets, and bicycle lanes. This is adjacent to the Halsted Orange Land Station, which people walk and bike to for L access and bus access. 20% of Bridgeport residents don't have access to a car, according to CMAP, so safe access to the CTA is essential. The employee entrance will be on Senour, a residential street directly across from homes in a quiet area with cul-de-sacs where children play in the street. This will also be adjacent to bicycle lanes on Archer Avenue, which is a designated spoke route and offers bicyclists a route northeast toward the Loop. This diagonal street is similar to the Milwaukee Avenue on the North Side. It will have traffic on Halsted Street. It's adjacent to, and the trucks will exit onto Halsted Street, which is a designated crosstown bike route, and Loomis Street to the west, which is a designated neighborhood bike route. Halsted and Loomis are bike routes across the Chicago River, and those allow us to connect with neighborhoods to the north. Halsted and Archer is already a dangerous intersection for pedestrians and bicyclists. In 2016, a driver hit me at this intersection, crushing both bones just below my elbow, requiring multiple surgeries and joint replacement. In the last three years, there have been 10-car pedestrian crashes and 18-car bike crashes in this area right at Halsted and Archer. We have too much traffic violence at this intersection and on the Southwest Side in general. Please vote no on this rezoning, and please adopt a moratorium on rezoning for logistics facilities until there is a citywide plan to distribute them equitably. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shabrowski, for your comments. Our next speaker is Melanie Brown.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning to the great Mayor Lori Lightfoot, our wonderful aldermen, alderwomen, and wonderful stakeholders. My name is Melanie L. Brown, and I'm speaking on behalf of Black Heroes Matter. We would love to have Lakeshore Drive to be renamed after the founder, Jean Baptiste Pointe de Sabre. We are all a part of his legacy. We are standing on his shoulders and should at least put our hands together to work to lift his name up. We have part of Lakeshore Drive on the table to be named after DeSable, but he did not discover just part of Chicago. He discovered Chicago, and so having part of Lakeshore Drive would be saying, "We only acknowledge you, founder, DeSable, in part." I believe we should name the whole drive after him, and he should have a street named after him as well. Naming anything after the founder should not be taken away from Chicago. We have renamed other streets, buildings, and towns. People hate change, but we will have the opportunity to get used to it as we have throughout history. Renaming should not be taken away from Chicago. It should just be showing and adding respect to the founder, for there would not have been a Chicago without him. We honor founders in every business, organization, sorority, fraternity, church, this nation, and it should not stop with a city. Let's honor our founder of Chicago, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Happy holidays, and thank you, Mayor Lori Lightfoot, for acknowledging the December birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. Hamant Patel.
Good morning. I am Hamant Patel. I am going to comment on Resolution R. 2020-583. It is an attempt to condemn India for its Citizenship Amendment Act, called CAA. First of all, it is full of lies. CAA is being condemned in spite of being one of the most humanitarian laws. Let me explain CAA in a simple language. Let's say one morning, your neighbor, along with his wife and two kids, knock your door. They are scared. They are frightened. They are frightened. Your neighbor says, "Please help us. Please help us. Fifty gangsters are behind us. They already have killed my brother and raped my sister. Now they are behind us. You being a good human allowed them to come inside your home." Five minutes later, the same fifty gangsters knock your door and screaming at you. If you are sheltering your neighbor, you better allow us in your home to stay with you. My question to all city councilors, what would you do in this situation? Please answer this question before passing the resolution. That is what exactly the Indian government has done. The Indian government has provided citizenship to those minority Christians, Hindus, Sikhs, Buddhists, and Jains who were persecuted, tortured, killed, raped by the majority of Pakistan, Bangladesh, and Afghanistan. I said majority, Muslims of Pakistan, Bangladesh, and Afghanistan. CAA is not about taking away a citizenship of any Muslim of India. It is not going to impact a single Muslim of India or anybody for that matter. CAA is all about giving citizenship to those who needed it the most. What is so wrong about it? Why should the Indian government absorb 400 million Muslims who persecuted minorities in their own countries? It is more than America's population. Another important point to note here is that Pakistan had about 24% Hindus in 1947. It is now under 2%. My question is, where did those 22% Hindus go to? Are they killed, converted, or kicked out? Please think about my question.
Mr. Patel, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Mr. Efrem Martin.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Martin.
Yes. To Mayor Lightfoot and members of the City Council, good morning. Again, my name is Efrem Martin, President of Martins International, and on behalf of the Black Heroes Matter Coalition, asking for the injustices to Chicago founding father Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabre to be corrected. Today, we are asking Alderman Brooklyn to have a vote in the next Transportation Committee meeting to rename Lake Shore Drive from Hollywood on the north to 67th Street in the south as the Sabre Drive. We cannot wait until April. In fact, 2020 should not have passed without this vote. Remember, justice delayed is justice denied. Alderman Upkin, our people found your remarks on WTTCW to be to give the Sabre an honorary street belittling to the founder. You went on to say, I quote, "As an African person who came to our city..." For clarification, the Sabre did not come to our city. There was no city or village by the river at Lake Michigan when he came and started his trading post. The land was with us, Chautauqua, with no one on that site. The indigenous people scattered toward Illinois and visited and befriended him. This is the Sabre land. In 1995, Martins International hosted our African Caribbean Festival of Life on the Sabre's original property, Cititran Center on the west side of Navy Pier, a venue that was used for major festivals upward of 10,000. Our event attracted 3,000 fans, mainly African-Americans. The then-Alderman Burton Attarist and a few other residents called our peaceful event an invasion of a private community. Dr. Margaret Barrows was in attendance and asked that we move the event to the Sabre Museum Garden, all because of fear of nothing. Two years earlier, in 1993, the same proposal to rename Lake Shore Drive as the Sabre Drive, presented by then-Alderman Tony Perkwinkle, was rejected, with Hilton Hotel saying the name the Sabre would affect the hotel and that visitors would stop coming to Chicago. So Alderman, in fact, what you are saying, unintended, is the same as the panic of Hilton Hotel 27 years ago, that the name of the Sabre Black Man would chase tourists away and stop the rich people from driving on the Sabre Drive. That is a part of systemic racism, which we, the people, will not allow anymore. The more compromised proposal is for the Auto Drive, which is fully endorsed by the Black Heroes Matter. It includes little or no residential address change and should make all council members and the people of Chicago proud. Again, Alderman Brooklyn, we urge you to-
Martin, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is James Burns.
Good morning, council members and Madam Lightfoot. My name is James Burns. I'm the president and founder of South Branch Park Advisory Council. We're a community-led volunteer 501(c)(3) organization focused on inclusive use of the parks located along the South Branch of the Chicago River and advocate to use the river as a connector between people and communities rather than a divider. We are based out of Park 571 at the Genie Gang-designed Eleanor Street Boathouse. This location is at the confluence of the South Branch of the River, Sanitarium Ship Canal, and Bubbly Creek. I'm also a Bridgeport resident and citizen of the city of Chicago. I come before this body today to discuss the proposed development by prologists along the South Branch of the Chicago River. This development and the conversation around it began in the summer of 2019. Just a few months prior to this conversation starting, my organization released the framework plan for South Branch Parks. In this plan, we outlined a vision for the future of our small corner of the city. This followed extensive community engagement and feedback that brought together hundreds of people and took nearly a year to complete. This prologist site is a few short blocks from the nexus of our plan. While we acknowledge the proposed development will bring jobs and economic opportunity to this underutilized piece of property, and the developer has committed to connect the riverfront walk on the eastern and western portions of the site, which is in line with our plan, we believe there is more work to be done. My organization has been in contact with our local aldermen, but we have had no meaningful engagement with any other party associated with this development. In contrast, our plan, my organization's plan, documents how many people we connected with and where they're from. We connected to over 100 people at our largest event. Bridgeport and Pilsen were by far the most represented communities. I haven't seen anything regarding this development representative of Pilsen, and if so, the parties involved haven't shared anything that demonstrates as much. Despite this, I remain optimistic that this site and all interested parties will engage in greater dialogue with the community, especially as the Community Benefits Agreement is finalized. As logistics and last-mile distribution centers continue to help the Chicago economy grow, I urge the city to hold meaningful conversations with stakeholder organizations. And again, I urge the city and all the people wishing to do business with the city to remember that residents and community-based organizations have a voice, and it should be heard. We are here, and we can strengthen developments just like this one. And when we are left out and diminished, it makes us wonder why, and rightfully so. Happy holidays, and thank you all for your service to the city of Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, for your comments. Our next speaker is Linda Hudson.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Hudson. Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good morning, Lori Lightfoot and city council members. My name is Linda Hudson, and I live in the 8th Ward. Some residents of the 8th Ward ask that I speak before you today. A resident of the 8th Ward has a petition currently circulating, and that petition is requesting that Alderman Michael Harris meet with her constituents on a regular basis on so many community issues with basically the increase in violence in the ward. I never thought that I would see the day when taxpayers would have to circulate a petition to have a meeting with a local elected official, not a congressman, not a senator, but a local alderperson. Alderman Harris' answer to meeting with the residents is to co-sponsor a resolution to the city council today, calling for a public hearing on efforts to curb the rising number of carjackings in the city. That is not good enough. The petition that's circulating, and it's only been circulating a few days, has over 1,300 signatures on it. For those of you listening and waiting on your elected officials to leave, you be the leader. Today at 7:00 p.m., the residents of the 8th Ward are holding our Old Town Home Meeting. Because stalling and co-sponsoring the resolution today did not stop the carjackings that happened yesterday, will not stop them that's gonna happen today or those that are gonna happen tomorrow. We urge you, Alderman Harris, to do your job and meet with your constituents. Thank you all for listening, and have a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
We're now moving to resolutions. Today, we have-
Madam President, this is Alderman Maldonado. Just want to be recognized as being present, please.
Thank you for joining us, Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you.
Your presence will be reflected as of this moment in the record. As I was stating, we are now moving on to resolutions. We have two resolutions today, congratulatory retirement resolution for Tim Samuelson and a resolution to recognize International Day of Persons with Disabilities. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell, are you there? Alderman Harris, can I get a motion?
I'm experiencing technical difficulties.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Is there a motion, Alderman Mitchell?
Madam President, I move a temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of respecting the time, we will forego the formal reading of the resolutions in their entirety, and instead hear remarks from city council. The first is a resolution congratulating Tim Samuelson, the city's cultural historian, on his retirement. I believe that Mr. Samuelson is with us today. Are there members that would like to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. Hi, Tim. I can't see you on the... I can't see you, but I just want to wish you well. Very short comment. I want to wish you well in your retirement. I have three things I want to congratulate you on, or just thank you for. One, I want to thank you for raising up the history of the Black Metropolis within the Department of Planning and Development in those days when it was not very fashionable to think about the Black Metropolis as a historic district. I think that the knowledge that you presented and the enthusiasm that you showed was the difference between a historic district being sort of in the background and then moving to a more prominent position within the city of Chicago. And it was because of your work and the work of people in the community who you worked so successfully with to get that done. The second thing I want to thank you for is for the long-running Bronzeville exhibit that was in the cultural center, for making the history, you know, come alive and jump off the pages to thousands and hundreds of thousands of people who traverse that long corridor each and every day. I want to thank you for the personal tour that you gave me, for filling in the information that, you know, I might have been missing on some of the historical icons and events of the day. And so, thank you for that. And I guess the third thing is to thank you for your tremendous support of the old Mid-South Planning and Development Commission and our work in trying to save the Supreme Life Building, the Overton Building, and the B Building. You will never be replaced, in my opinion, in the Department of Planning and Development or in the city of Chicago. Your genuine love for the history of the city of Chicago is apparent, and I just want to thank you for being a great public service and for lifting up our entire city. So, good luck in the retirement. I'm not sure what you're gonna do, but we'll miss you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderman Ed Burke. Alderman Burke, you are still muted. Can you take yourself off? There you go.
I tried to unmute it now.
We can hear you now.
Madam President, thank you very much for initiating this recognition of Tim Samuelson. And as I was about to speak, I reached behind me for this book. Tim, you may remember that we published this book in 2009 on the 100th anniversary of the city hall. Truly, Madam President and ladies and gentlemen of the council, when we recognized the assistance we received from Tim in the writing of this book, we were fully aware of the fact that Tim is, what we say in the law, sui generis, one of a kind. If I could amend this resolution to provide that we create a historian emeritus and have it spread upon the permanent record of the proceedings, I would do so. But as I've come to know and observe Tim over the years, I think it's true to say that one of the last things he's ever sought is any kind of public recognition or adulation. He was always one of those typical Chicago officials who labored so long and well in the shadow of other people, never seeking any attention. So, I wish, Tim, that I could get your contact information. I tried to reach you, but apparently you're not getting messages from the city phone. But would you email me or call me and let me know where you can be reached, because you are a remarkable Chicago figure that this is certainly well-deserved reputation. Again, Madam President, thank you for bringing this to the attention of the whole council.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. The chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to, Tim, thank you for your service to the city of Chicago, what you've done. It's important to study history and know whence we came, and Chicago has such a rich history, and you're a part of that. You've provided that to our visitors, residents, and to all of Chicago. So, on behalf of the residents of the 11th Ward, I want to thank you and congratulate you on your service. You're a credit to your family and a great public servant, and I wish you all the best going forward in your next endeavors, making more history. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. Are there others that care to speak? Going once, going twice. Tim, let me also add my voice to the congratulations. We haven't known each other long, but I've really come to depend upon you, as you know, from my various outreach to you over these last 18 months. I agree with all the words that have been said. You are truly a treasure to our city. You are truly a treasure to our city. And let me just say a few words about your background for those who don't know. You're a proud graduate of Sullivan High School, also attended Roosevelt University, and I will fast forward and say, we should credit former Cultural Affairs Commissioner Lois Weisberg for recognizing in 2002 that you had something of incredible value to our city, and she then created the position of Official Cultural Historian of the City of Chicago. And we've been the beneficiary of your love of the city, your encyclopedic knowledge of Chicago history ever since. A few highlights, and I won't be able to do it justice, but I do think it's important to note that over your eighteen career, eighteen-year career as Chicago's first and only cultural historian, you had a hand in preserving or restoring the lobby of Union Station, chess records on South Michigan Avenue, Pilgrim Baptist Church, and various other sites in Bronzeville to vital the Black history, Walt Disney's birthplace in Hermosa, the American School of Correspondence, and the Robey House in Hyde Park, along with the Waller Apartments in East Garfield Park, and the old Carson Perry Scott Building in downtown Chicago, just to name a few. You will be greatly missed. You are irreplaceable. Luckily, I do have your cell phone number and intend to make liberal use of it. Tim, thank you on a job well done. Congratulations. We wish you a happy retirement. And maybe, Alderman Burke, we will take you up on your suggestion to appoint him as cultural historian emeritus. He has generously agreed to be available to us even in his retirement. So, Tim, thank you very much. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and allow Tim Samuelson to have the floor to say whatever remarks he would like in, in passing?
So moved, Madam President.
So moved by Alderman Dow. Hearing no objection. Tim, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much to everybody, and this has been a dream job. And it's easy to have a dream job when you have great material to work with, and that's the city of Chicago. And working with many of you, it has been just a total delight, and I've enjoyed sharing what I can. Now, I'm not going anywhere as far as Chicago goes. Everything's still up here, and it is available for anyone that wants to check in with me, kick some ideas around, ask a question. I'm not giving up on any of it. I'm there for all of you. I thank everyone for an amazing number of years in one of the best jobs, the best city you could ever have, and my heartfelt thanks to everybody. And I take it seriously. I'm here. Reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right. The second resolution is a recognition of International Day of Persons with Disabilities, and we'll go straight to remarks. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for passage of, let me ask first, are there any members of the body that would like to speak to this resolution? If so, please raise your hand in the, in the chat box. Let me just add a few words. We've made tremendous progress in the city of Chicago in understanding and recognizing disabilities. And disabilities, as you well know, comes in many forms. Some are physical disabilities, some are others. But it is important, on this day, when people all across the world are recognizing International Day of Persons with Disabilities, that we take this time to pause, to recognize that we have a significant number of people within the city of Chicago who have disabilities and who are living very fulfilled lives in spite of that fact. I see that Alderman, Matt O'Shea, would like to be recognized. Alderman O'Shea, please. The chair recognizes you.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to stand in support of this resolution. Alderman Burke could tell us a little bit about the history of persons with disabilities. The Special Olympics movement started here through his wife, the Honorable Ann, Supreme Court Justice Ann Burke, fifty-three years ago. Of the many things we're very proud of in our city, I think that, that is at the top of the list. Special Olympics started right here in Chicago at Soldier Field. And, Madam President, I'd like to thank you for your efforts to support that important mission and supporting all people with disabilities. But thank you for recognizing such an important event, and we should all do as much as we can for the movement of Special Olympics. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The chair recognizes Alderman Burke. Alderman, you're still muted. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and Alderman O'Shea is being somewhat modest. I hope our colleagues understand that he is currently the president of Children's, Special Children's Charities, doing a remarkable job in helping to ensure the continued growth and success of that movement. I suppose I, I might even suggest that the term "people with disabilities" might better be phrased "people with special abilities." That's actually what the movement did beginning in 1968, when, as some of us can remember, people that suffered with what some people call disabilities couldn't occupy a role out there in the society that all of us enjoy. But beginning in 1968, with the help of Eunice Kennedy Shriver and the Kennedy family, the whole attitude towards these people with special abilities changed. And in fact, today, it is the largest movement in the entire world to help expose people with these special abilities to the opportunities that other people took for granted. And that germ of development began here in the city of Chicago. Alderman O'Shea mentioned that it began in Soldier Field, and certainly it'd be, I think, an additional remark that, that Matt would direct to the beautiful Richard Hunt sculpture that exists on the north side of Soldier Field that has a eternal flame commemorating the beginning of Special Olympics and that worldwide movement today that began here in Chicago in 1968. If, if not for Mayor Richard J. Daley and his support, Dan Shannon and his support, and so many others who have gone on to their eternal rewards, the millions of people that benefit from Special Olympics today would not have that opportunity. So, thanks, Alderman O'Shea, for reminding me that I should add a word or two to this resolution. Thank you, Madam President, and let's hope that the next fifty-three years of Special Olympics will be as successful as the past fifty-three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. The chair recognizes Alderman Lasbada.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to rise in support of this resolution and particularly recognize the organizers and activists of Chicago within the disability community. Particularly, I want to call out Adam Ballard and Kathleen O'Brien for their work in opening my eyes and the eyes of so many others to the very real struggles that disabled Chicagoans face. The lack of access to so much of our public transportation system, the continuing fight for them to have housing that is both fully accessible and deeply affordable. That work continues, and I am so glad that so many within the disability community lead on that work. I want to call out that the victories in this city that have been won for the disability community have won, been won by the disability community. Folks who have literally laid their bodies on the line for the Chicago, I stand in honor of them, the privilege of working with them, and knowing that we're going to continue to work for a city that is fully accessible and meets the needs of everyone with a disability. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lasbada. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I, I think that I want to just give kudos to you for bringing these resolutions. They're so important to give us, you know, an insight of, of history. And obviously, Alderman Burke, such an encyclopedic knowledge of, of the city and so many things that have happened here and continue to happen. Such a tumultuous year, that, and historic as well, that, that keeps us in mind of why, why we celebrate in, in these folks like Tim Samuelson, like John Vinci, and thanks Lois Weisberg for having the, the wisdom to appoint him, appoint him to his current job. But again, just kudos to you for, for bringing this to us and, you know, give us an understanding of, of why history is important and to keep our own culture in this city so precious. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. I will just say that as a child of a parent with a disability, disability inclusion is very personal to me. I watched my father struggle to the day he died because of his disability, the economic opportunities that were denied, and the daily slights and exclusions that people with disabilities have to suffer through every single day. As we need to make sure that we understand and continue to challenge ourselves to do better in this city. And really, my father's experience is one of the things that made me become an advocate and subsequently a lawyer. International Day of Persons with Disabilities provides every Chicagoan with the opportunity to reflect on our shared obligation and commitment to realizing the rights of persons with disabilities as a matter of basic fairness and justice, and that we have to do more as a community to continue to break down barriers. So, I am pleased and grateful to join the body in support of, of this resolution. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for passage of the resolutions?
Madam President, I move passage of the two resolutions and nominees.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion to return to regular order of business?
Yeah, now move re-return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Madam Clerk, we're now on communications. Please read the communications that have come to you.
Series of communications from her Honor the Mayor to the Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request to control our transmit here with an ordinance designating municipal depositories for 2021. Viable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on finance. Request, Commissioner Aviation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement with the Midway Noise, Midway Noise Patability Commission. The favorable consideration of this ordinance would be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Aviation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing renewal of an intergovernmental agreement, the O'Hare Noise Patability Commission. Viable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit here with a fine 925 amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class VI tax status for property located at 825 South Kilpatrick Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class VI tax status for property located at 4118-4138 West Lake Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class VI tax, tax status for property located at 2075 West 43rd Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class L tax status for property located at 225 West Randolph Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Family and Support Services, I transmit here with a new agreement with Northwestern University to access platform to support innovative learning opportunities for you. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the committee on education and child development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Public Health, I transmit here with an ordinance increasing fines for air pollution and fugitive dust violation. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on environmental protection and energy. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing acquisition of property 8840, 8844, 8850, and 8854 South Commercial Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with Better RX Inc. for use as a pharmacy. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Assets, Information, Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing execution of a renewal lease agreement with Heartland International Health Center. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing execution of amended redevelopment agreement to the Third Ward Parade of Homes program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of loan agreements, Lazarus Renewal II LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Mayor's Office of New Americans, I transmit here with it together with Alderman Rodriguez, Frederica Sanchez, and Amira Rosa, and ordinance amending Chapter 2-173 of the Municipal Code of Chicago. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on immigrant and refugee rights.
Public safety.
With two committees, Peter?
Two committees called, matters referred to the committee on committees and rules.
Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing expenditure of open space impact fees and associated acceptance of parcels within Indian Ridge Marsh, Marsh. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioners of Housing and Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances providing for anti-displacement measure for residents. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to Chicago Community Land Trust Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments on the Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to committee on housing and real estate. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. I C D Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following document was filed in my office. Inspector General Audit's report concerned the Department of Streets and Sanitation, Commercial, and High Density Residential Buildings Recycling Enforcement. I C D Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council of all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 24, 2020, which required by statute be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on December 16, 2020, by being printed in full text and print pamphlet copies in the journey proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also informed the City Council that the ordinances authorizing issuance of City of Chicago general obligation bonds and additional sales tax obligations for various purposes and the levying collection of direct annual taxes which were passed by the City Council on November 24, 2020, which was requested to be published in a special pamphlet form, was published in special pamphlet form on December 3, 2020. I C D Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications or reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas which are referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, claims against the City of Chicago which are referred to Committee on Finance, Amendment of Municipal Code Section 3-56-500 by extending standard veteran license pilot program until July 31, 2022, which is for the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for designation of Perkins Nordene House at 6106 North Kenmore Avenue, a Chicago landmark which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Recommendation by Commissioner on Chicago Landmarks for designation of Emmett Till and Mamie Till Mobley House at 6427 South Warren Avenue, as a Chicago landmark which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Recommendation by the Commission on Chicago Landmarks for designation of Illinois Bell Building at 225 West Randolph Street as a Chicago landmark which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes Mayor oral and clerk communications.
Next up is the committee reports. We'll start with Committee on Finance. Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on December 14, 2020. Item number one on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing redevelopment and loan agreements with, and the issuance is up to $12 million in multifamily housing revenue bonds for Paseo Boriqua Arts LLC for the construction of affordable housing at 2709 to 2715 West Division Street in the 26th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote, but if no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Laspata.
Aye.
Alderman Laspata is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tavarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tavarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Sichio Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Sichio Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Telfaro.
Aye.
Alderman Telfaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyes is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Wagaspeck.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspeck is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spasato.
Alderman Spasato is an aye.
Alderman Spasato is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Tony is an aye. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Capman.
Aye.
Alderman Capman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Ostroman.
Aye.
Alderman Ostroman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Peter?
Your Honor, there are 58, no nays.
Thank you. Please mute your phone. Thank you. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration. Alderman Thompson, you're still on, Alderman Thompson, you're still on mute.
On mute, okay.
There you go. There you go.
All right. Sorry, Madam President. I motion to reconsider that first vote of the Finance Committee.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion for reconsideration is denied. Chairman Wegas back. Back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Item two is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bond inducement language regarding tax-exempt housing revenue bonds issuance for the acquisition and development of properties at 1800 to 1812 West Roosevelt Road and 1801 Greenshaw Street by the Chicago Lighthouse Residences for LLC. The forthcoming issuance will be for up to $7 million in tax-exempt housing revenue bonds. This item was approved by the committee by the roll call used to establish quorum, with the exception that Alderman Austin would like to be, was recorded as a no vote and would like that reflected in the record here today. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number three is an ordinance authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute redevelopment and subordination agreements with Greater Auburn Gresham Development Corporation and Greater Auburn Gresham Support Corporation, supported by tax increment financing and a master lease for office space and buildouts at 839 to 845 West 79th Street. The item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no, I'm sorry. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I have to say thank you to Carlos Nelson, G A G D C, the Greater Auburn Gresham Development Corporation. He's executive director, his leadership and the vision for this. But you can have a vision, but if you don't have someone to help you reach that vision, it can sometimes, and had it become true, can sometimes be difficult. So to the mayor and her team, I want to thank you so much for your commitment to invest Southwest. And this development here, as they were able to get some CARES Act monies, as well as they were able to win an award from, I think it was the Prisker Foundation, to get some money from this and then work with the City of Chicago to get TIF dollars to bring this development, this much-needed development, to the 79th Street corridor, which is then also sparking other development along that corridor. So your commitment, Mayor, to invest Southwest in doing the things that we need to bring development to our community, this is just one part of that that will make a difference for our entire city. So I just wanted to say, thank everyone that's a part of this as we bring this to fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. I believe there's a pending motion. Chairman Wegas back? Go ahead. You want to renew the motion?
Yes, and no one else wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number four is an ordinance authorizing the Department of Housing to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Housing Development Authority to reallocate a portion of the city's unused tax-exempt bond volume cap for 2020 to facilitate financing of affordable housing or qualifying mortgage loans by IDA. The item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum. And if there's no one that wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you. And, Madam President, item five is an ordinance authorizing the Department of Water Management to enter into a preliminary water supply agreement with the City of Joliet. The item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum in the committee, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, item number six is an ordinance authorizing the Department of Planning to execute the 59th Amending Agreement with Summer Corp. 504 Incorporated as administrator, authorizing tax increment financing to TIF, SPIF, new project areas of 51st Archer and Stevenson Brighton redevelopment, or development areas in various established small business improvement funds. The item was approved by the committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum, with the exception that Alderman Lopez voted no. If no one else wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Madam President. I wish to be recorded as no on this item as well. Before the full council, I just want to reiterate my objections that I made in council and committee that many of the things that we are looking at are long-term, do not necessarily help our businesses in the here and now. The $60 million that we're being asked to give to this program and ask that DPD further continue the discussion on how to help our businesses get through COVID, not just plan for after COVID. Thank you, Madam President.
There's a pending motion. Alderman Lopez's objection is noted. Hearing no further objection, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number seven is a re-referral of a proposed ordinance amending municipal code by adding new Chapter 3-10 to a joint committee of the Committee on Finance and Budget and Government Operations. The re-referral was approved by the committee by the roll call used to establish quorum, with the exception that Alderman Lopez would like to be recorded, voted no, and would like to be recorded as voting no. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, item number eight is regarding monthly settlements through Law Department. These will be placed on file with the clerk. Items nine and 10 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payments of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number 11 consists of three orders authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlement orders in the cases of A11A, Jamel Island, Trizell Island, and Janelle Island versus City of Chicago in the amount of $295,000. B, Patrick Bowden versus City of Chicago and City of Chicago at All cited as 20C0929 in the amount of $162,500. And C, Denigma Howard versus City of Chicago at All cited as 19C1281 in the amount of $300,000. 11A through C were approved by the committee by the roll call used to establish quorum with the following exceptions. On item 11B, Alderman Napolitano voted no and would like to be recorded as no here. And on, pardon me. Alderman Cardona and Alderman Haddon would like to be recorded as voting no on 11C. And unless there are other Aldman who wish to be recorded, no, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider with these exceptions.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to be recorded no on item C as well.
Alderman Lopez, I don't know if you're able to hear Chairman Wegas back, but he does note your objections as part of his committee report. If he didn't note the objection regarding item B, that is now noted as soon as he speaks it. But we will make sure that we now have double, triple regarding your.
Yeah, Madam President, I think Alderman Lopez was that item C?
Objection to item B, that's for item C.
Alderman, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, Alderman. We're having difficulty hearing you. Is you, are you asking to be recorded as a no on item C as well? Is that what you're saying? Or item B?
Only C.
Only C.
I did not.
Okay.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to be recorded as a no on item C.
So noted. The chair recognizes Alderman Sichio Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also like to be recognized as a no for item 11C.
So noted. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe this item was debated in finance and understandably, some of my colleagues are voting no on that. I think reforms are in order in terms of contact in the school system as much. I support it because I think you're minimizing risk of the taxpayers. But we have a long ways to go to minimize the risk for taxpayers even further by not actually having these cases brought up against the city. And thank you for those who are.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Chairman Wegas back, for recording my no vote. Just to, just to comment on this, I appreciate Alderman Cardenas's point of looking at economic liability to the city and also especially given light of the case of Ms. Jeanette Young. We have so far to go as a city, and I find it very, very disturbing the situation we find ourselves in with, as a city, our law department asking people to settle when great harm has been done to them, especially when that harm is done to black women, people of color, disabled people, and other marginalized populations. So this no vote is a, recognizing that Ms. Howard deserves more than what we are giving and asking her to settle for. Thank you.
So I feel compelled, in light of the last comment, to say this. All of these plaintiffs have lawyers and are represented by counsel. We deal with counsel as an ethical responsibility. We never deal directly with the plaintiffs. And in many instances, and I don't know the circumstances underlying these three cases, but in many instances, the plaintiff's lawyers themselves come to the law department asking for settlement. So I don't think it's accurate or fair for comments to say that we are, in effect, forcing plaintiffs to settle. The courts are open. If plaintiffs do not want to settle, they should not. And that is the advice that plaintiff's counsel has to have in conversation with their client. So I think it's, if we, if you want to dig down into the details of each of these, you should. But a blanket condemnation of the law department, which the last comment suggested, I think is irresponsible and frankly, and based on my experience, wildly inaccurate.
I agree, Madam President.
I don't know who that comment was.
Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Spazado agrees with you.
I see that.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, go ahead.
There's, there's a, somebody who's raised their hand. Alderman Sigcho Lopez briefly.
Brief, but I also feel compelled to comment in light of the, the cases of police brutality that we continue to see across the city. In the case of Ms. Young, I do think it's important that the city recognizes that we have a systemic issue with police brutality. Ms. Young called out the police 43 times, 43 times to denounce that this was an illegal and wrong mistaken raid in her house. So again, I feel compelled.
Alderman, I'm sorry.
I have, I have, I have my five minutes. Madam Chair, I have five minutes. I have five minutes. You commented.
We have three matters that are up on, before the council. You have three matters that are up before the council. Those are the three matters that are before the council. If you want to talk about a separate issue, there will be a time and a place for that, but you are out of order, sir.
I'm not out of order. I have, I have my. According to rules, I have time to comment, Madam Chair. You have your time to comment. I have my five minutes comment, Madam Chair. And as I said, I do think that when you talk about ethics, it is important that we do indeed talk about ethics. It was unacceptable what we saw in, in, in the media last night. I think it's urgent. And I think if there's a time and a place, I do hope and I, I hold you accountable, Mayor, to have a hearing on the matter on the Public Safety Committee and the Health Committee because the public deserve an explanation of what happened and why the, why the law department was trying to sue the plaintiff because she was trying to make this public as is her right. So again, Madam Chair, with all due respect, let's talk about ethics. Let's talk about ethics.
You do not know the facts, but that doesn't let you, stop you from making wildly inaccurate comments. We will be addressing this issue in total after the city council meeting, but I would appreciate if you and others who have an interest in this, as everyone should, because the images portrayed on that video were upsetting, no question whatsoever. But I, what I would ask you is actually get the facts, sir. You spend a significant amount of your time talking about issues for which you have no facts, and that is highly problematic. It is irresponsible. It undermines your fiduciary responsibility.
Out of order.
Not only to the council.
This is out of order.
But to the larger city of Chicago. You are out of order. I allowed you to make a comment. We have three issues that are up right now.
Madam President, personal attacks on members of this body is out of order.
I assume that's our, that's all Alderman.
Not a personal attack.
Madam, Madam President, can we go? Madam President?
I'm asking, hold on one second.
Facts are personal attacks.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, folks. Facts are, facts are always relevant. And Alderman Sigcho Lopez, anybody else who wants to talk about the matter that's been portrayed in the public, what I'd ask you to do is actually get the facts. We have a city council meeting. There are three matters that are up. Those are the three matters that we're talking about right now. If anybody else wants to speak on those three matters that are before the body, then I will recognize you. Outside of that, you are out of order. Chairman Wegasback, you have a motion.
Yes, Madam President, I'm going to re, renew my motion with the exception, read the exceptions here today on these three cases, just items A, B, and C that were mentioned. On item B, the Bowden case, Alderman Napolitano would like to be recorded as no. On items, item C, in the Howard case, I have Alderman Lopez, Vasquez, Sigcho Lopez, Cardenas, I'm sorry, not Cardenas, Cardona and Haddon voting no. And I renew my motion.
With those, no votes noted. Hearing no further objection, the motion is granted.
Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Alderman Dow, Committee on Budget.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council, reporting for your committee on the budget and government operations, which held a meeting on December 9th, 2020. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Item number one, an ordinance concerning the First Amendment to intergovernmental agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for the extension of time to complete flood protection and runoff reduction pilot study in the Chatham area covering the 6th, 8th, and 9th wards. I move passage of the item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, the second item on the agenda is an ordinance introduced by Alderman Tom Tunney of the 44th Ward approving the transfer of funds within the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards for the year 2020. Same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
The next committee is the Committee on Rules. Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your committee on committee rules, which met Friday, December 11th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m., the committee recommends the passage of the following items. Item one is a correction of the general proceedings for September 9th, 2020. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two is a proposed ordinance amending municipal code section three dash eight dash zero five zero to recognize the deaths of Chicago police officers, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians from COVID-19 as presumed contracted while in the performance of their duties. This, the committee recommend that this item be referred to the Committee on Budget and Governmental Operations. I move passage of this recommendation by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is a proposed resolution calling for the establishment of the Chicago Police Personnel and Resource Reallocation Pilot Program. This, the committee recommends that this item be referred to the Committee on Public Safety. I move passage of the recommendation by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And the final item is a proposed resolution calling for hearings on expanded community-based domestic sexual and gender-based violence prevention programming. The committee recommended that this item be re-referred public state to public safety with the chief sponsor's approval. I move passage of this recommendation by the same motion, if there's no objections.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Next is the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Chairman Austin. Madam Chairman, you're still muted.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to be called in on the last end. I left the notes, so I will get them before you finish committee hearings.
All right, I will, I will move you to the bottom, sir, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Chairman Villegas.
Morning, Madam President. And members of the city council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on December 7th, 2020, and reconvened on December 14th. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Items one through 10 are a series of appointments to various special service areas. Justin Fettick, Mariaen Sarapis, and George Revellides as members of the SSA number 16 Greek Town Hostet Commission. Elizabeth Fauld as member of SSA North Hostet Commission. Halias Loderic and Jonathan Gordon as members of SSA number 23 Clark Street Lincoln Park Commission. Paul Purell as member of SSA number 48 Old Town Commission. And Nancy Stenick, Gregory Gutman, and George Rumsey as members of SSA number 61 Hyde Park Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items 11 through 62 and item 64 are a series of ordinances for tax levies, scope of services, budgets, and management agreements for each special service area with the following distinctions. Items 43, item 43 is an ordinance for the enlargement of boundaries, extended tax levy period, scope of additional special services, budget and management agreements for special service area number 19, Howard Street Commission. Item 54 is an ordinance for the extension on an imposition of tax levy period, increase of tax levy, scope of services, budget, and management agreement for special service area number 54, Sheridan Road Commission. Item 58 is an ordinance for the establishment, special service area number 75, Oak Street, authorization of tax levy, scope of services, budget and management agreement. And item 59 is an ordinance for the amendment of tax, of the tax levy, scope of services, budget, and management agreement for special service area number 16, Greek Hostet Commission. Please let it be noted that Alderman Burke will abstain from voting on items 12 and 31. The Greater Southwest Development Association is a service provider for both special service areas. Within the preceding 12 months, Alderman Burke practiced law with other attorneys in a law firm. Other attorneys in the firm represented Greater Southwest Development Association with the preceding 12 months of property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessor, Cook County Board of Review, Illinois Property Tax Appeal, Property Tax Appeal Board relating to various properties. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Following items are being held in committee. Ordinance 202 dash 5896 and 02 dash 0 dash 870. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Villegas. Next is the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council, reporting for your committee in housing and real estate, which held a virtual meeting on December 8th. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is a loan agreement with North Park Village LP and associated ground lease agreement with EHDOC North Park Village Charitable Corp. for a portion of North Park campus to develop affordable elderly housing in building H at 5801 North Pulaski. Alderman Samantha Nugent would like to be recognized on this, and after that, I would like to move passage of this first item by the first favorable roll call, the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. But Alderman Nugent wanted to be recognized.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Commissioner Navara and Jim O'Connell from Housing for helping with this project. The, the North Park Village campus truly is a crown jewel of the Northwest side. This village once served as a municipal tuberculosis sanatorium. So the campus now has beautiful green space, a waterfall, parks, trails, and is home to many seniors. The historic buildings on the campus were converted to the North Park Village senior apartments, offering affordable senior housing options for seniors from across the city. Today's ordinance charts the course for the final building to get much-needed renovations, upgrades, and historic preservation. In October 2019, I met with the seniors who called this building home and brought partners together from Housing, DPD, AIS, and the Park District to talk about the future of their building and the hopes for the rehab. Now, over a year later, we are one step closer to ensuring these seniors have the security of nice, safe, clean, and well-maintained apartments. Just this summer, I'm so proud that we, as a council, moved an ordinance to ensure that the land of North Park Village will forever be protected by a conservation easement. Today, I'm asking for your support for affordable senior housing and the renovation of the building H. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
There's a pending motion and no objection, so so ordered.
Thank you. Item number two is amendment to the municipal code sections 2 dash 44 dash 090 and 2 dash 44 dash 100 to extend the duration of the near north, near west, Milwaukee corridor affordable housing pilot area ordinances until June 30th, 2021. I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a negotiated sale of vacant city-owned property at 4444 South St. Lawrence to Rosemary Weish. I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is the sale of city-owned property at 4918 West Adam Street to David Hickman. I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a negotiated sale of vacant properties at 11700, 11702, 11708 South Buffalo Avenue, and 11701 South Burley Avenue to NP Avenue O LLC. I make the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We had the virtual meeting on December 9th, 2020, and the following items were passed by the committee. Item number 02020 dash 5783, an ordinance authorizing issuing of various temporary relief measures to business. Office of the Mayor, Department of Business and Consumer Protection, Alderman Mitz, Hopkins, Harris, Cardenas, Burnett, Smith, Gardner, Kapelman, and Martin. Madam President, I would like to, yeah, be able to speak on this matter if none of my colleagues wish to speak at this time.
Please proceed, Chairman Mitz.
Thank you. As the chairman of the City Council Committee on License and Consumer Protection, I stand in strong support of this ordinance, supporting the business community, struggling like so many other industries to survive the challenge caused by the global Corona 19 pandemic. And during our recent December 9th License Committee meeting, we had an opportunity to make a difference. We passed a key ordinance which provided various of temporary release measures to assist these businesses. Today, in view of the challenged, challenging economy climate, Chicago's business need our support more than ever. So I'm proud to have worked with you, Mayor Lyford, to provide an array of relief to the city business community, and I look forward to continuing to do everything in our power to deliver support. I move that the city council incur in the recommendation of the license committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 2, 02020 dash 5786, an ordinance authorized the execution of an agreement with the Chicago Cubs Baseball Club LLC, Office of Mayor and Office of Budget and Management. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
We have three ordinance regarding moratoriums in the various wars, the 27th, 38th, and the 40th ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This concludes my report for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection.
All right, next up is the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chairman Burnett.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your committee on pedestrian and traffic safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, November 12th, 2020. Before the committee, there were 145 items. There were 145 routine traffic items that passed and zero routine items that did not pass. I move for passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Chairman. Next is the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Chairman Brookins.
Hey, good morning, Madam President and members of the city council. First of all, I would like to say Merry Christmas to you and your family and all of the families of the members of the city council, and may God keep you and keep you healthy and safe during this pandemic and throughout the holiday season. Reporting for your committee on. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on December tenth, twenty twenty, the following ordinances were passed by majority of the members present. Pages through two through sixteen include a hundred and seventy-nine ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by the local aldermen from wards one through six, eight, ten through twelve, fourteen through fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-five through thirty-two, and thirty-five through fifty. Under Rule fourteen of the Rules of Order and Procedure of the Chicago City Council, Alderman Burke abstains from voting on the following items. Grants of Privileges, zero two zero two zero dash five six 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 and zero two zero two zero dash five five nine five, zero two zero two zero dash five five nine six, zero two zero two zero five dash five five nine three, zero two zero two zero dash five six two two, and zero two zero two zero dash five six two three. Due to practicing law with other attorneys in, in law firm, other attorneys in the firm represented American Dental Association, Michael and Michael Hair, and Northwestern Memorial Hospital within the preceding twelve months in property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessor, Cook County Board of Review, Circuit Court of Cook County, and the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board relating to these properties. On page seventeen include ten ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards two, six, forty, and forty-two. Pages eighteen and nineteen include one amendment and one ordinance for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen from wards eight, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-two, forty-one, forty-five, and forty-seven. On page twenty includes one vacation ordinance located in the fourteenth ward. On page twenty includes also one easement located in the twenty-seventh ward. There was also a subject matter hearing regarding renaming Lakeshore Drive. And if there's no, which no vote was taken. And if there's no objection, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the Associated Unsuccessful Motion to Reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And next up is the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards Chairman Tony.
Madam President and members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on December first, twenty twenty. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by majority of members present. Page one contains a text amendment of Municipal Code Section sixteen dash eight dash zero seven zero to further regulate rezoning in conversion areas. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee Report and Associated Unsuccessful Motion to Reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages one through thirteen contain various map amendments in the first, second, third, eleventh, twelfth, seventeenth, twenty-first, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, thirty-fifth, thirty-eight, fortieth, forty-first, forty-second, forty-third, forty-fourth, forty-sixth, forty-seventh, forty-eighth, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, noting that Alderman Sichio Lopez and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez would like to be recorded as voting no on document number zero two zero two zero three dash three seven two four for the property commonly known as twenty-four twenty-four South Halsted Street.
With those.
Yeah, yes, Madam President.
With those objections noted, hearing no further objections, so ordered.
Next, page thirteen contains two demolition orders for non-contributing buildings in the forty-sixth ward Uptown Square Historical District. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page fourteen contains various large signs over a hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade in the third, thirteenth, eighteenth, twentieth, twenty-second, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, thirty-first, thirty-fifth, forty-first, forty-second, forty-third, forty-fourth, forty-fifth, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my first report. I'll move on to the second report. Madam President, members of the City Council, preventing a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on December fifteenth, twenty twenty. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by the majority of members present. Page one contains a text amendment of Municipal Code Section two dash one twenty dash nine ten by modifying fines and remedies for disrepair of historical and architectural landmarks. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee Report and the Associated Unsuccessful Motion to Reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages one through eight contain various map amendments in the first, eleventh, sixteenth, nineteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, thirty-second, thirty-fourth, thirty-fifth, thirty-sixth, forty-first, forty-third, forty-fourth, forty-sixth, forty-seventh, forty-ninth, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page eight contains one historical landmark fee waiver for the property at ten thirty-five South Claremont Avenue in the twenty-eighth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page eight contains one large sign over a hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade in the eleventh ward at six forty-five West Roosevelt Road. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes the second page of my report. Moving on to the third. Madam President and members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on December first, two thousand twenty. The committee considered two items which received do not pass recommendation, recommendations. The first was document number zero two zero one nine dash three eight one five, the historical landmark designation for the Pilsen Historic District, primarily West Eighteenth Street from South Levitt Street to South Sangamon Street, and residential blocks bounded by the eight, by Eighteenth Street, South Ashland Avenue, West Twenty-first Street, and South Racine Avenue. This ordinance received a do not pass recommendation from the committee by roll call vote of zero yays and eighteen nays. The second item was document number zero two zero two zero dash four five three zero, a call for a temporary moratorium on the issuance of complete demolition permits for applications filed on or after November first, two thousand twenty, within the Pilsen Historic District. This ordinance received a do not pass recommendation from the committee by roll call vote of seven yays and eleven nays. Madam President, that concludes my report, reports, I should say.
Thank you Chairman Tony. Next is the Joint Committee on Housing and Real Estate and Zoning, Landmark, and Building Standards.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting, presenting a report for your joint committees on housing and real estate and zoning landmarks and building standards, which held a meeting on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty. The following item was passed by majority of the members present. Page one contains a text amendment of Municipal Codes Titles two, four, and seventeen by modifying various provisions governing affordable dwelling units. Before I ask for a motion, I know my Chairman Osterman would like to speak on this item.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to commend Chairman Tony for his leadership in helping us steward this ordinance through to the members of the zoning and the housing committee, which had, held a subject matter hearing earlier in the summer and had a meeting earlier this week. This ordinance creates a pilot project that will create the ability for homeowners and property owners to establish accessory dwelling units. It will add units of housing around the city of Chicago in these pilot areas. This is a collaborative effort with the City Council and the Housing Department, the Zoning Department, and Buildings. I want to commend Commissioner Navara, Patrick Murphy, and Matt Bode for their leadership in their departments and your administration, Mayor Lightfoot. This is an ordinance that we think is going to create units that by nature will be affordable and accessible around the city. We will keep the council informed as to the progress of this as we add these units and have, the Department of Housing is going to have an education campaign on this matter as well as a grant program for low to moderate income Chicagoans to add these units to their properties. So, I seek the support of the members of the council today and look forward to this helping people around the city. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Osterman. Chairman Tony, is there a motion pending?
Madam President, I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee Report and the Associated Unsuccessful Motion to Reconsider, noting that Alderman Ray Lopez and Alderman Patrick Thompson would like to be recorded as voting no on this matter.
With those no votes recorded, hearing no further objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you Chairman Tony. Chairman Austin, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for allowing me to report at the end. Screen went just totally black. For reporting for your Committee on Contract Oversight and Equities, a meeting that was held on December the second, two thousand twenty, an ordinance solely extending Articles six of Chapter two dash nine two of the Municipal Code. Ordinance number zero two zero two dash five one six one. I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance Report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my one-letter report.
More, more to come Chairman Austin, more to come. Thank you ma'am. Next on the agenda is Agreed Calendar. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of ninety-nine items proposed for the Agreed Calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions from the, from the following aldermen. Mayor Lori E. Lightfoot, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Smith, and Alderman Osterman. So, I move that we, the passage of the Agreed Calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next, new business. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Call the, sorry, please call the wards beginning with the fiftieth.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Exemptions from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-four oh seven North Polina Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Tony has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-nine oh two North Clark Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Smith has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at five sixty West Fullerton Parkway, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Smith, Cardenas, and Waggis Pack have proposed resolution to call for hearings on commercial and high-density residential recycling program, which is referred to a joint committee of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy and the Committee on Ethics and Governmental Oversight. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section three dash four dash one fifty-one to require the Department of Finance to publish monthly report of revenue collected from taxes imposed, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to disallow additional package goods licenses on portions of North LaSalle Drive, West Grand Avenue, and West Illinois Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of tax gap standard number four seventy-nine on East South Water Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Vescas has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of North Damon Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Nugent has proposed order for a historical landmark fee waiver for the property at fifty-eight oh one North Pulaski Road, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Mitz has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West Lake Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Viegas has proposed resolution to call for support of Frontline Healthcare Workers Student Loan Assistance Act of two thousand twenty and call on United States Secretary of Education and United States Secretary of Treasury to authorize federal and private student loan forgiveness for essential workers, which is referred to the Committee on Education and Child Development. Alderman Ramirez Rose has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Irvin has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at fifteen twenty West Harrison Street, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for a vacation of the public alley in the area bounded by North Ogden Avenue, West Lake Street, North Loomis Street, and West Randolph Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sichio Lopez has proposed ordinance for conveyance of subsurface freight tunnels to an execution of easement agreement with six hundred South Wells LLC for multi-phase mixed-use residential development located at two twenty-three through three thirteen West Harrison Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sichio Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call for establishment of indoor sites for COVID testing, flu shots, and COVID vaccinations at Chicago Park District Field Houses, School Gymnasiums, and Chicago Department of Public Health and Department of Family and Sports Service Facilities.
Budget, next Posado.
Which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Two committees called, the matters referred to the Committee on the Budget.
Mr. Clerk, when two committees are called, I believe it must be go to rules.
Apologies.
Okay.
Alderman Rodriguez has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary Magic Juan Suarez Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Rodriguez and Alderman Hyden have proposed resolution to call for incoming Biden Administration to immediately enact immigration reform, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Brookins has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West eighty-seventh Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez has proposed resolution to call for establishment of city, county, and state government Regional Reassistance Commission, Renaissance Commission to publicly discuss collaborative COVID-nineteen mitigation efforts, regional recovery, reopening spectrums, post-pandemic economic growth, development, and travel and tourism revitalization, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman Burke has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Cardenas has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to disallow additional package goods licenses on portion of South Archer Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Sidlowski Gaza has a proposed ordinance for dedication, opening, and vacation of public ways in the area bounded by East one hundred and sixteenth Street, South Avenue O, East one hundred and twenty-second Street, and the South Chicago and Southern Railroad property, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Beal has proposed order for historical landmark. Alderman Beal has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at one, thirteen, one, thirteen, forty-five, South Forestville Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Mitchell, Telfiero, and Alderman Harris have proposed resolution to call for hearings on the rising number of carjackings in Chicago and the necessary preventative procedures required, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman King has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section seventeen, dash, two, dash, zero, two, zero, seven, regarding special use approval, prohibited use, and parking standards for cultural exhibits and libraries within various residential zoning districts, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman King has proposed orders for approval of the plan of Carlos S. Dotson re-subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hopkins has proposed order for the historical, historical landmark fee waiver for the property at twenty-one, forty-six, West Pierce Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transport, or Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And Alderman LaSpada has proposed order for historical, historical landmark fee waiver for the property at fourteen, forty-one, North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes the aldermanic introductions.
Thank you, sir. Next up on the agenda, Alderman Mitchell for approval of the journal.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any corrections to the journal move that it be approved by the same roll call vote that was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Next is miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
And the date and time of the next City Council meeting.
I provided an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council for Wednesday, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, at ten a.m.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Get ordained by the City Council, the City of Chicago, Section one, because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID nineteen, the next regular meeting of the City Council in accordance with applicable law shall be conducted by video conference on Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, beginning at ten a.m., and shall provide for remote participation, remote viewing by members of the public. If prior to then the Commissioner of Health issues a written termination, that the City Council can safely proceed with an in-person meeting, the meeting will be held at a location to be determined that can safely accommodate the City Council meeting. Any such written determination will be posted on the City Clerk's website along with an amended meeting agenda, which will include a fixed location by ten a.m. on Monday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters. I move passes in omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Now, next on the agenda is the omnibus, and the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus to pass by the same roll call vote as was used to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next, a motion for adjournment. Alderman Mitchell.
There being no further before the body, business before the body, I move that we adjourn by the same roll call vote that was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. The motion is carried. City Council's adjourned. Happy holidays to everyone.